... in case of any disorder, please. Join me at the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by individual, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting tonight. Let's start off with approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agenda with following amendments. Additional certified and classified personnel actions consideration item number two dash three.
Second.
Second.
Alex seconded. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, put your hand. Close.
Okay. As you know, we used to give building, school building reports, everybody, all seventeen schools used to get a report every year. Now we've went to a every other year format. And this evening, we have Jenny Wilson, many if not all of their teachers. And I believe, I counted fifteen, fourteen, fifteen students with them that were kind of dressed in that blue color, which may be that paw pride that you've got up there on the screen. Melissa Stewart is the principal, welcome.
Thank you.
Circle the screen if you're suspiciously.
I would never do that.
I see your office.
Although we do have a little wildcat out in the audience somewhere, I saw her come in. There's our parents raising a rye. Okay, first of all, thank you for giving us opportunity to showcase Jenny Wilson tonight. And what we'd like to do is just show you some of the programs and things that we do for our students. But also, we want to thank you all for your dedication to being on the school board and everything we do for our students and our families. So thank you all on behalf of our school. So, let's welcome our Jenny Wilson Cougars. Here we go.
Alright, I'm Kim Curran, fourth grade teacher, and we're here to tell you about the Cougar Bank. The fourth graders are in charge of it. And so I'll let you, them introduce themselves.
I'm Toby Johnson, I work at the customer ships.
I'm Laura Reyes, and I'm the president.
I'm Monty Perez, and I'm the toddler.
I'm Erin Wagner, I help with the marketing.
I'm Pat Roth, I teach first grade.
I'm Marsha Crowe, I teach kindergarten.
I'm Linda Arce, I teach music.
Okay, and they'll tell you what they do.
We work at the Cougar Branch of the First National Bank. Fourth graders can apply to be president, vice president, toddlers, customer service, and marketing.
Our bank hours are every Friday morning from seven forty-five to eight fifteen. A big thank you to Ms. Polly Austin for being our supervisor and to the bank for all the cool donations.
Students and staff can open an account, we only take deposits. If you want to withdraw your money, you go to the main bank.
I'm Peggy McGlin, I'm librarian at Jenny Wilson School. And we're going to tell you about the NFL Play Sixty program that we participate in.
My name's Max, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name's Kay, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name's Michaela, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name's Brayden, and I'm in first grade.
I'm Kathy Corr, I'm the system operator.
I'm Joan Schlacken, I teach science.
Bonnie Ashland, fourth grade.
Katie Griselli, teach second grade.
Julie Sessna, school secretary.
Our school participates in the NFL Play Sixty program. The program encourages us to be active for sixty minutes every day and to be healthy.
This is our fourth year of Play Sixty. We completed all the steps to become a touchdown school last year and want to do it again this year. We kicked off the program with our annual tailgating event. We had a healthy lunch, stretching station, obstacle course, football throw, discussion about healthy food choices, and a putt pass and kick station. We took the Play Sixty pledge, we challenge you to take it also.
I went to the Play Sixty run. And I got first place and these are my medals.
Okay, Brayden, can you tell where you went?
I went to Denver.
He went to Denver and participated in the Play Sixty activities there and what did... Tell them about the Play Sixty, what did they encourage you to do?
They encouraged us to run, to be healthy, and at the end they were giving us healthy drinks and healthy food.
And how many minutes should we exercise a day?
Sixty minutes a day.
Right, and then we've got a pledge that we're challenging you to. You can start it right here. If you would like to take the pledge of us to increase your activity level. I know some of us are getting a little older and maybe I can't quite do sixty rigorous minutes every day, but if you would take the challenge with us and be willing to sign that, we'll hang it up with all of our pledges at Jenny Wilson. And then we had the post rep, this was what we received last year for being a touchdown school. Okay, good job, you all. Want to say to us? We'll just get it at the end of the day. Yeah, thanks, kids.
My name's Kim Hartnett, I'm the school nurse at Jenny Wilson. And we're here to introduce our walk-run program to you. And we'll start by introducing ourselves.
My name is Jay, and I am in third grade.
I'm Christian, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Luke, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Zachary, and I'm in fifth grade.
And I'm Sherry Nelson, I teach third grade.
Barb Goldie, secretary of grade.
Linda Fair, school literacy coach.
Each of the kids is going to share a little statement with you, a fact, maybe from last year. And this is a program that we offer to our students and also to our staff to encourage healthy habits. So Jay, do you want to start?
Last year, our students walked and ran over four thousand five hundred miles.
Our top eleven runners ran over six hundred fifty miles.
Ninety-six point five percent of our school participated.
Eighty students earned the bright green twenty-five mile T-shirt. Five students earned the extreme T-shirt for running sixty miles or more.
And you'll see, some of them have on their feet, these are the feet that they can earn for turning in some of their miles, and they have different incentives for different amounts of miles.
Alright, good job, you all. Thanks, Beth.
Hi, I'm Megan Ford, I'm first grade teacher at Jenny Wilson. And we would like to tell you about Box Tops for Education. And so first we'll introduce ourselves, and then the kids have some things they'd like to share with you.
Larry Days, Rock Counselor.
Clarice Nelson, second grade.
Jen Collins, interventionist.
Rex Croft, third grade student.
Eleanor Croft, first grade.
I'm Louie. I did kindergarten.
We collect box tops for our school. Each box top is worth ten cents. Last year, we collected nine thousand four hundred and two box tops. We have a, we have a, we have a competition between classes.
Mrs. Ford's class collected the most box tops this month. This trophy gets to be in your room.
Will you please help us with box tops?
Alright, and walk around and give them all a sheet.
We're asking you to save your box tops for us if you already don't donate them to a school. So here's the sheet for November, you can glue them on.
Okay, let's bring everybody back here.
Thanks.
And have a student stand in front. While they're coming in, we'd like to take, and while she's passing those out, we'd like to recognize the parents and grandparents. And I'm not sure if we have any aunts or uncles, but I know we've got some sisters and maybe a brother in the audience for Jenny Wilson. So everybody that's here to support Jenny Wilson, if you could please stand. Yeah, this is awesome. Thank you for having your kids here tonight, and thank you for all you do. Also, staff and students, thank you for being here tonight and for everything you do for Jenny Wilson. We have, oh, give them to all those guys, too. You bet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and we're going to close out with that. So if you have any questions for us.
How's your kitchen?
It's wonderful. Very nice.
Any question? Well, thank you all very much for coming. Will you please come by so we can shake your hand?
That's good, Lauren, come on back. Here, come down here. Lauren, come down here, so we can shake all their hands.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job, guys. Good job.
Nope, you just go right out there, and your ass can pick you up out there. Good job. Way to go.
Good job, guys.
Good job.
I like all the feet. Thank you. Good job. Good job.
Here, high five. Right here.
Thank you. Unless somebody has correspondence. Move to the consent agenda, please.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda. Recommend approval of consent, consent agenda items follow one through five B.
Four seconds, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, put your hand. Close.
You may recall, we reported to you back in about April on the transformation, literacy transformation initiative that the district was undertaking. And we've been working steadily and progressively on that. We have tonight's presentation from the writing committee. The writing was the first curriculum-related committee that was formed, and they are nearing the point where they're ready to roll out to the staff and for writing across the district. So to present that this evening, Renee Alcorn, who is literacy coach at Garden City High School, and the chair of the committee, and co-chair is Chris Corby, who is at Florence Wilson in second grade.
The kindergarten girls are hard act to follow. Our writing committee is an awesome group of people. It's been a very powerful process. I was telling them today that, because we were kind of tweaking some things the steering committee had asked us to do, and I was telling them that, you know, that the steering committees have been very complimentary, and they really value all the input that we've had. But getting together twenty-three teachers that are pre-K through twelfth grade in one room and trying to hammer out these skills that they need to hone in writing has been a real challenge, but a really positive thing, too. We have one teacher from each side, including four from the high school from each academy, and the mix of teachers from pre-K to twelfth grade. And so we have a unique opportunity that we don't always have in a district this big to communicate not only building to building, but across grade levels, and learn how learning takes place in our district. So we were charged with two tasks when we started this. One was to develop system-wide practices for teaching writing, and the other one was to facilitate the shift to the common core. And so we began just brainstorming the skills that we thought that our Garden City kids needed and that they were most lacking in. And we came up with thirteen different things. And then we had, we wanted to prioritize those, and we decided that we would start with something that was really approachable, that we could actually do effectively pre-K through twelfth grade. So we started out with, we started calling it writing the answer to a question, but we ended up changing it to composing an answer to a question because the pre-K and kindergarten kids can't actually write, but they can learn how to compose. And it goes from something as simple as, you know, what color is the sky? And then saying, the color of the sky is blue, repeating the question, to something really sophisticated that might be on an AP US history class test at the high school level. So we came up with those thirteen skills, and then we started unpacking that skill. And to look critically at what foundational skills are necessary in order to answer a question. And that sheet that you have, that's the colored sheet, is kind of like a scope and sequence. But all of those things are the skills that you need just to answer a question. And I think that's pretty amazing to look at that in those terms and see all the skills that they need, starting at pre-K, that they can build upon to actually learn how to give an articulate answer to a question and go off to college and be able to do that. So that's what that document means. And then we also adopted, and that's for the teachers, because that's for the teachers to look at and see exactly what skills that they need to teach and where they need to teach them. And then we even took a look at how they were going to present those. And we completed templates that talk about, what does this look like at second grade? What does it look like at fifth grade? What does it look like at seventh grade, twelfth grade? And what instructional strategies are needed so that the teachers can effectively teach the kids this skill and they can master it? We also adopted a strategy, and that's the other handout that you have there with the race car on it. And Shelley Diniston found that picture, and I, we thought it was really appropriate because pre-K kids will like that car, and so will twelfth grade boys. So we thought it was a good thing for the district. But we adopted, we actually adapted a strategy that was already in place, that's called the race strategy. And it involves four states, four steps. One, restating the question, then answering the question, and then citing evidence and editing for errors. And you can see that that corresponds with the four things that we are asking kids to do on our scope and sequence. And so all of the, we're planning to blow those up in posters so that they can be in all the rooms in the district. And we're all going toward the same goal, is that they can articulately answer a question in a correct manner, you know, be it a one-sentence answer or a multi-paragraph answer. Then we decided to write models of this so that when we taught our, when we teach our teachers, we decided on one topic, and we wrote thirteen questions all about insects. And they got the gamut from, you know, how do you know this is an insect? You know, in pre-K and, or in second grade, Christmas class, compare and contrast an insect and a spider to something as sophisticated in the high school. And then, well, the sixth grade science question is, how can the removal of an insect species affect other organisms in the ecosystem? And then at the high school, talking about fleas, what was the socioeconomic impact of the black plague of Europe in the thirteen hundreds? So they're all about insects, but they get more and more sophisticated. And we built the PowerPoints for every grade level, and they have these model questions. And then those teachers use the race strategy to answer those questions. So that's what they'll be able to take to their buildings and share with their faculty, is how exactly you use this strategy. And you can teach your kids to use this strategy to answer a question appropriately. And today we met, and we are working now on a rubric for teaching this skill. And we're discussing whether we need to have one rubric for the whole district that we can use. And we'll have to have little rubrics for the students at different levels. But as far as the teachers goes, they'll all be looking at the same thing. And they'll all be looking at that same scope and sequence depending on where they are. And we just, we want consistently consistency, not only in one school or one grade level, but district-wide on these important skills. And we just think that attacking our writing deficiencies in this way has to have positive results. You know, if they are learning this skill from pre-K on and it's all built upon, it can't help but have a positive effect. And I think it'll be a really effective strategy. And we're excited that we are the first group that went through this process. And we've tried to kind of write down what our steps have been, because the other people on the reading committees, the speaking and listening committees, and the problem-solving committees are going to kind of follow our lead, so we want to make sure we get it right. And hopefully we have. Today, one of the teachers actually said at the committee meeting, you know, they want us to do this fast, or they want us to do it right. And I said, we want to do it right. We want to make sure that it's something that, if we're going to use this as a model for the rest of our literacy initiative, that it's something that is done right. And if you have any questions, I brought some, Chris is a second grade teacher, and then we have a teacher, a literacy coach from the middle school, and a fifth grade, sixth grade, sixth grade teacher with us. And so if you guys have any questions about what this looks like across the district, I've kind of got some people to come that would be able to address your questions.
Question? You know, continually, as we look at implementing new standards, think in terms of what you as teachers are always dealing with, the kids with the different learning styles, those that are more auditory and those that aren't, you know, and how we're going to sort of modify these. I imagine it's still going to come down to what it's always come down to, and that's in the classroom with the teacher, and understanding each of the kids and how they're responding to what you're presenting to them.
And actually, our idea for our, for our rubric is, you know, we have these skills that are our expectation, that we want them all to be adept at. And, you know, can they do this independently? Do they do it with some scaffolding and the teacher helping them? Or can they do it only with assistance? And of course, our goal is for them all to be able to do it independently.
I think it's great that you're starting with writing as a model for the other areas, because it seems to me that when you write, it requires deeper thinking to be able to think about what you want to say and then to actually see it on the page. And I think that that's really going to have spin-off benefits from the other areas, because I think you can kind of read, but still not have your mind engaged as much. But I think writing, it's very hard to write without really getting that deep thought process. So I think this is wonderful to see. It's so complicated when you see it.
Yeah, more complicated than we dreamed, because we started this on March the fifth. And we've met every two weeks, not during the summer, but every two weeks, that school's been in session since March the fifth, working on this. And, you know, ended up with, I think, a great end product. But, you know, I would have never dreamed that it would have taken that long, you know, even answering a question. That can't be that difficult. But really, when you look at all those skills that are embedded in that, it's pretty interesting.
Another question? Renee, thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Next, we're ready for the, we listened to you last time that you had the discussion of us to upcoming presentation on December seventh at the Kansas Center for School Board State Day. As we listened the last time, it felt like that you wanted to present to those folks that come to listen to the presentation, a copy of the PowerPoint, because we have that before you, this evening. And then we wanted to give them something in reference to the presenters, which is the board, Sally Cobble, and something about the school district. So we put together a brochure here. Most of the presentation is still in the draft form, and the brochure here is in the draft form. We're just going to be asking, is this, are we hitting the mark here of what you were looking for, what you wanted to provide to folks that come to the presentation on December seventh?
The only part of my God is the picture of Tom Blackburn is not, it's like twenty years earlier. You might need to see a more current picture so that people in the audience can recognize him on page. Other than that, that's good.
Is somebody talking just now?
I have no comment about that, Mr. Blackburn, but...
Couple ideas that have been expressed to me was when we as a board did the presentation, kind of take the topics as a team concept, and Laura and Gloria talked about working together. I think that would be a good idea. So I'm not sure everybody wants to pair up. You know, if you go just off the signups as they are right now, Laura and Gloria are covering Plan Bax, and Jean and Mark are covering misconceptions, Alex and I are covering the reality. It was also suggested by Laura that I do introduction of the group that will be in front. And I would very much like, or Rick, the ad, Derek, y'all would be part of the stage group, not just in the audience. But do the introduction, and then do some form of closing. And I don't have an issue, Rick says, that's enough, because nobody will recognize me because my picture's not right, because that's all I do. But I do like the idea of pairing up the two of us doing topics. That way, that way these fine coaches will have to deal with one of us.
Is that me we got to split up? You and I.
It'd be a full time job for a coach if it's you and I. Other comments or thoughts from anybody?
I, I just had a couple of thoughts. One, going back to the brochure, um, I think it would be helpful to, to show how many different languages are represented in our district as well as our, our brain reduced lunch rate or just some other statistics that, that really show. Because when we say where we have a lot of ethnic and racial student mixture, I think it helps when they have a number because our numbers are probably in excess of what, you know, most other districts look at. And so I think that, that gives us some credibility when we talk about these things. So any kind of statistics on our diversity, I think would be, would be helpful. The other thing is I think a lot of this information that we're presenting, it really is available to other people, whether they, they get it in this form or not. But what I was hoping that we would do is, is have a presentation maybe that was, um, informative as well as persuasive to this point of view. And, and so in additional, in addition to maybe some of the instructional coaches that are, are going to help us with this, I, I think it would be really helpful to have maybe some of the debate coaches help us with, with the way we are presenting so that we reach more people, do it in the best professional and, um, the best manner that we can. That, do you think that would be possible?
Anything's possible, um, but we need to talk to Mr. Tierney though.
I would, I just think I know I would benefit from getting some pointers on, on how to say something or how to present. You know, it's been a long time since I was in any kind of speech class, so I think it would be good for all of us. I appreciate it.
You know, one thing that I'm anticipating, I guess, in our presentation is, uh, it's, sometimes it's a little bit easy to get bogged down and you don't have a whole lot of time and will want to move right along. And particularly to the extent, and I don't have a sense of this yet, but I, I get a little bit of sense that, that in a way we may be presenting to the, mixed metaphors, presented to the choir, so to speak. And, and so some of the Q and A time might be more, as valuable as some of the pointers to be presented. So I, I certainly commend folks for having worked on presentation to pare it down. But I do think we'll want to move right along and hit the high points, get into the sort of misconceptions. And we may find out at the first presentation, there isn't a lot of Q and A, but I would expect those folks to, um, to want to converse a little. And so we want to be sure to have time for that as well.
So thoughts? Is this the PowerPoint we're going to give to the office? Then I would, I would suggest that instead on this brochure, where we have the outline of the presentation, take that off because it's already on here and have a picture of Dr. Aitner, key staff there, our key leaders. And then maybe a picture of another school or something. I mean, if this is about us, then that's, because the presentations are already, the outline presentations on this.
And so I would echo with Gene's comments that a little demographic of the district itself, the community would be, I think, helpful in this brochure purposes. Possibly where you're talking about, see him on the back page there.
This is a suggestion I, I'm going to do.
The space becomes the issue of, of these brochures as you can see, but if we, and you're right, Gene, we, we got the outline on there twice and then the presentation will come here. If it's the board's world, we could take that off and add more, more demographic information about the district.
But if key staff, if it's maybe on there, if you're going to be up, answering questions, it could be, they want to say, oh, that's, you can, I figure, I mean, I know, probably everyone knows you, but there might be one person on there.
Well, I guess my suggestion is if we're going to remove one of the outlines, I'd leave it on the PowerPoint. They clear it off the annual brochure.
And that's what I'm, that's what I was suggesting, and putting a picture there.
Reverse.
Yeah, put in a picture there and more information about the school.
We got, and Mark's interested in more question time. There's forty-four slides here, here in forty-five minutes.
Let's move around a little.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my thought is you may show slides, but you may not do a lot of narration about a slide if we are intending to get with the five minutes period at the end for questions and answers.
I think you need more time than five minutes for the questions. You mean, one question could last five minutes.
But I think if they're really interested, they're going to check out in the hallway.
Yeah, they're going to come find you.
Because other people got to move and go to other events and seminars, they're, they're going to find you in the hallway.
I think, I don't know, Gene, you attended a lot of it.
My first Q and A.
My, my gut feeling is that there probably won't be a lot of questions, it'll be more like Alex's talk, that they're going to come find us individually questioning us more so than group questioning.
Right now, your schedule is at one to fifteen, so your presentation will probably open by two, right, questions and answers. So if you get forty-five minutes or so presentation, you got ten, fifteen minutes for questions. You also got time. That gives people fifteen minutes to get to the next presentation. And some folks will maybe stay a little later to visit with you and talk to you. Like Martin said, he'll talk to you about your presentation. But your next one will start at two fifteen and in the same room.
Well, in an effort to keep everything on track, maybe it would be helpful if you try to have a time allocation for each segment of the presentation so that the people presenting kind of know whether they're on track or they're a little behind or they're going over. Because we don't want to like end up with the people at the end, um, you know, basically out of time and just having to gloss over that part. So we could try to, try to keep up with it as, as we go. I do like the idea of, of including, um, at, at least Dr. Aitner's picture on there because a lot of superintendents do go to this and a lot of staff go to this. So to have our key staff and, and you on there, this brochure, I think it would be very helpful because another superintendent might not approach us, but I think they would seek you or your staff out to, to ask questions of. And I think that would be a way to, to get that information.
Like, that's something we do, I'd like to see what's being, coaches that work with this presentation together also, if there's room. Y'all can come and have an autograph party after.
Or answer the questions.
Well, I also think that it lends itself to this as a, as a cooperative venture on our part. It's not, um, the board pushing this and it's not the superintendent or the administrative people pushing it, it's not the staff pushing it, it's a cooperation. And I think that would kind of show that.
I guess my question there is what, if we are going to kind of group two per segment, essentially what, what do you need from us so that we can coordinate with the coaches?
I just want to make sure that the names are attached to the segments. We've got the coaches here so that we can set up times. This, this would be easier than email if maybe after the meeting, we connect the people who are working on current reality with the coaches who can help with that and so on. Which saves some time. So if, if, if these are the names that are going to be with, with the, the segments, I, I think that's all we need except finding time for you to get together with a coach to, to go through it.
Is everybody comfortable with how this is arranged?
What, I do want to point out one thing, you talked last time about moving things around and it did not get changed on the outline as it appears here, but the slides did get changed within the PowerPoint itself. And that is misconceptions is moved to the middle, is switched places with, with Plan of Action so that we end with the, the plan moving forward. And we will correct that on the second slide.
I really like that outline format. I think it'll, um, maybe be a little, a little bit friendly that way. I don't know, I, I like it that way.
I mean, just thought, thought process, I guess, Rick, is, you know, as part of the introduction, I would cover the first two slides, then Sally adds the three. Then we come into the current reality, which Alex and I would do. And come with discussion with Mark and Gene, agreed to do. And then come to Gloria and Laura with the Plan of Action. And then finish with the final slide and then I can ask you some questions.
Just to kind of summarize briefly here, let's first say the changes to the brochure and take your consensus here. Let me eliminate the duplication of the outline of the presentation in the brochure. That will give us additional space. With that additional space, we will increase the information regarding the demographics of the district and who we are. And also credit the coaches for their part in this. And probably also somehow, some way involve Dr. Dennis, Leanne, and myself in their position.
And you may report.
Probably not a picture, but pictures will take up more space, but probably in there we can do that in a paragraph or two with the coaches and Dr. Dennis, Leanne, if that's okay. The space is going to be the issue.
Well, you may have to remove the welding picture. I don't really think pictures would be in there. And that picture of people running, I don't really know.
Would you think our picture needs there?
Yeah, I do. I cover some of it. And then the demographic, more demographics of the school.
Well, and they do have a picture, they have a way to identify you and the way to speak to you.
But I can't, I don't think it would be safe to just pictures of Leanne, Dan, and the coaches.
Well, I don't think we were, I think that's a suggestion of listing the coaches, but photos of you and Dr. Dennis and Leanne. I think, I, I don't know, I mean, I could picture it having almost just a line of three pictures and then maybe an explanation versus what you have in here. That way maybe that might save you a little bit of space.
And this may result in taking the welding picture out. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
That would be taking out a certain picture. You still have two other student pictures in the brochure.
I know it's in the brochure, but I'm just wondering if we want to have a last slide for, during the question section with the contact information in case somebody misses picking this up or, Anna, just, just a question. I mean, you don't have to speak to it, it's just up there.
So at the end of the presentation, that contact information come up on there or the last slide?
Yeah.
It won't be verbalized, but it'll be up, uh, our phone, our phone number's on there though. It's in the brochure.
Well, and that's why I'm just asking, because I know it's in the brochure, but I don't know, you know, if everybody, I mean, I, I think more people are going to pick up the, the PowerPoint than, you know, if they see this and there might be a chance that they don't pick this up, not realize it, or are they together?
We will clip these together.
Okay.
It was my thought.
Okay.
We would already have that done, had it on, so that. So they get both where they want those to run.
Well, then I could get into your conclusions, mention our contact information is in our brochure.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, do it, having it on the screen and having it in the brochure necessarily is a bad thing. So back to you, Dr. Dennis. You want four to eight times while we're sitting here or?
Why don't we just, we'll do it right at the end of the meeting, if that's okay? Or even at the end, while they're here, we can get it together, four or five counts.
I think everybody.
To do now, that you, you don't want to skip. It's all big.
Listen, I'm doing now.
Another question I have, at our next board meeting, would the board be okay with actually giving the presentation at that meeting? And you can see the things that you like, the things that maybe you want that, that you could do better. Kind of give you a run through at the next meeting, if you will, and then if we need to get with the coaches again, we would still have time to do that for December seventh. Everybody amenable to that, we'll put it on the agenda. So the meeting with the coaches or the coaching of the coaches needs to come sometime in this timeframe, until now, your next meeting.
Your next meeting's November fourth?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay.
She said eleven.
I think we're reading to the blackboard.
Eleven time, eleven day.
I want to try to. Because, because of the way the presentation was done, uh, we're rearranging the coaches a little bit, otherwise we'd have four coaches all in one section and one on each of the other two. So working with current reality would be Renee and Kathy Kane. Working with Plan of Action would be Lisa and Linda. And then working with misconceptions, I got the order wrong, I know, it's Michelle and Marsha.
What's yours, Gene?
It's open this week. During the day.
Renee, what does Friday afternoon look like to you?
I can do that, we're, we're not in school that afternoon. I can do that.
Do you do Friday?
Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
As parent teachers, this weekend?
They're over at, what, nine thirty that morning?
We do two o'clock Friday afternoon at high school.
I might just continue y'all later, because I might be able to come up there sooner than waiting till Friday.
Okay. And I have a pretty fluid schedule because I don't have, I don't make classes with. And I have a pretty fluid schedule because I don't have, I don't make classes with kids. So I can do it all at the same time, really, the chicken though.